I'd like to call the Monday, March 3rd, 2025 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Turbin.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025 Regular Session and Work Session and our February 24, 2005 Work Session and Executive Session, Council Member Jackson?
Yes, Mayor Duncan, I've read the meeting minutes of the February 3rd Regular Session and Work Session and the February 24, 2025 Work Session. Upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Tonight is a special night today in Oakwood because we have a new Public Safety Officer swearing in ceremony. Josh Rothenberger is going to be sworn in here shortly, but before we do that, I'd like to introduce his family. His wife is Jade. Where is she? There she is, welcome. And son Caleb and Gavin, they're there, great, welcome. And then his father Leroy and his mother Diane are back in the third row. And you have an Aunt Marie is also here. Welcome to all of you. I'm going to come down to the front, and we'll have our Chief Hill introduce Josh, and then I will give him the oath of office. Okay. To bring the oath of office.
Have you memorized it yet?
Yeah.
About fifteen years.
This is always a special night for us, and we say this every time it happens, it's unique. But when we talk about what we do as a Public Safety Department, being certified police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and our paramedics, and we find another person that has a lot of years of service in both capacities, it's very rare, and it's very special for us to get somebody like this within our organization, and this is why. Officer Josh Rothenberger began his public safety career as a part-time firefighter, paramedic, working in various fire departments in the Dayton area in early 2000s. In 2011, Josh accepted a full-time position with the Xenia Fire Division, and while at Xenia, Josh served as a firefighter, paramedic, and a fire inspector. Additionally, Josh attended numerous professional certification courses related to the fire service, such as trench rescue, water rescue, structural collapse, and confined space training. However, after eleven years of being with Xenia Fire, Officer Rothenberger made a career change. In 2022, Josh resigned from the Xenia Fire Division and accepted a full-time position with the Xenia Police Division. Subsequently, Josh attended the Police Academy and served the city of Xenia as a full-time police officer for the last three years. Josh's work history and commitment to the public safety profession clearly demonstrates his career path. Given Josh's background, training, and experience in all three public safety disciplines, and comparing that to what we do, he is a natural fit. Josh is currently completing his FTO program and will be working on his own very soon. Please join me in welcoming Josh to the Oakwood Public Safety Department.
So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of this city.
And ordinances of this city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of public safety officer.
The duties of public safety officer.
Upon which I'm about to begin.
Upon which I'm about to begin.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We have a lot of special guests here in the audience, which is why we brought extra security. And this is time for the visitors portion of the session, and hopefully this meeting will not last till 2:00 a.m. like the long meeting we had many years ago. But if anyone wishes to address council, this would be the time for you to come down to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. Let me introduce this person to you. He is a good friend of mine, Fred Kramer, and he is also a Sugar Creek Township trustee. And he wanted me to swear him in, but I had to inform him, under Ohio Revised Code, my jurisdiction ends at the county line. Congratulations and welcome, Fred.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. This is a very special night. Bill and I have been friends for a long time, and we wanted to honor him. So myself, trustee Fred Kramer, trustee Marvin Muller, trustee Carolyn Stephanie, Township Administrator Barry Tiffany came here, plus friends and folks around to celebrate this special day. So, Sugar Creek Township Proclamation. Bill Duncan, the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city of Oakwood. Starting January 4th, 2010, to current, whereas Oakwood became a settlement in 1872, and after Oakwood became a village in 1908, it was incorporated as a city in 1931. Whereas, being appointed to City Council in 2003, Bill Duncan followed the history of Oakwood and has elected mayor January 4th, 2010. Whereas, the city of Oakwood, home of many famous families, like First Man in Flight Orville Wright and founder of NCR John Patterson, whose heroic efforts helped save the city from the flood of 1913, and is now the current home of Mayor Bill Duncan and his wife Terry. Whereas, Oakwood, known for its community, family, quality of life, and where Troop 1001 was the first chartered troop of the Boy Scouts of America, and where the Cub Scouts got their colors, blue and gold, from Oakwood High School Team Colors, and the site of the first Soapbox Derby. And whereas Bill Duncan helped grow Oakwood through an agreement with UD for the use of Old Rivers Fields and tennis courts, and whereas Bill Duncan is instrumental in the settlement of the Agreement of Condos and Office Building at Point Oakwood and Sugar Camp, approved an eighty-four-unit condo complex at Point Oakwood, and the construction of Cook Park and the establishment of the Oakwood Citizen Police Academy. And whereas Bill led the efforts in installing EV charging stations, installation of LED streetlights throughout Oakwood, and conversion of Orchard Lee Park tennis courts into two pickleball courts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Trustees in Sugar Creek Township recognizes Bill Duncan as the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city of Oakwood. The number of elections and the work to win those elections, the countless meetings solving some of the most complex problems, is an inspiration to the trustees and administrators of Sugar Creek Township, and they hereby honor and applaud Mayor Bill Duncan for his dedication and service to the city of Oakwood, and further proclaim him to be an excellent public servant of great character. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't also introduce our former Mayor Judy Cook. Welcome to you, and our former Assistant City Manager Jay Weiskircher hiding there in the back. And I also want to acknowledge that the gavel that I use for every meeting since 2010 was a gift to me personally from Fred Kramer. And I could not have had the success that the city has had without my longtime Vice Mayor Steve Byington. We became mayor and vice mayor sixteen years ago. And then Rob Stevens has been on council with me as well for sixteen years, and we thank you. And I've been excited to work with our two new council members, Lee Turbin, who's in year five, I think, and Healy, who's in year two, Healy Jackson. So thank you. As I say, at all of my city, state of the city addresses, you know, we're a very collegial council, we all work well, none of us have hidden agendas, and we work for the betterment of all the citizens of Oakwood. And so I've said that so many times, I almost have it memorized. But I thank you, council members, for assisting me in all the work for City Council. And while I've got you all here, because I got the mic, I also want you all to meet our new city manager, Katie Smitty. So Katie is also here. Okay. I don't even know if I want to ask this, is there any other members that wish to address council at this time? If so, state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you as well. Okay. Remember, we're out putting tickets on all of y'all's vehicles, so. But again, I appreciate that very much. We will conclude the visitors' section of our meeting, and we'll go straight, you don't, that's not, okay, good. Although that one picture on the left is still on my ID card to get in the building. So if, let's go to legislation now, and Councilmember Stevens has a resolution and an ordinance and a resolution and an ordinance. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Duncan, and congratulations. Resolution declaring the necessity of improving certain lights between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This is an annual resolution that is the first step of our 2026 street lighting program. We are required by law to pass several pieces of legislation to provide street lighting each year. The first is this resolution declaring the necessity of street lighting throughout the city. I will also be introducing the second piece, the quote "ordinance to proceed" for the project, but this will be its first reading, and we will not vote on that ordinance until our April meeting. The third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain streetlight costs, will be introduced as a first reading at our April meeting, followed by a final assessment ordinance to be introduced after the project has concluded. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio by lighting the same with electricity. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2026 street lighting program. It is the ordinance that authorizes the city to proceed with the project. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time. Next, a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, and providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual resolution that is the first step of our 2025 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. This year's program area covers all city streets within the area bounded by Far Hills Avenue to the west, but not including Far Hills Avenue, the Oakwood-Kettering Boundary Line to the east, the Oakwood-Kettering Boundary Line to the south, and Corona Avenue to the north. We are required by law to pass three pieces of legislation in order to carry out this program and assess the sidewalk costs. The first piece is this resolution, which declares the necessity of sidewalk repairs in these parts of the city. I will also be introducing the second piece, the quote "ordinance to proceed" for the project. After the project concludes, there will be a third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain sidewalk costs. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
And finally, my last one of the evening. An ordinance determining to proceed with the repairing of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on certain streets between certain termini in the city of Oakwood, Ohio, and providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2025 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. Again, this year's program area covers all city streets within the area bounded by Far Hills Avenue to the west, but not including Far Hills, the Oakwood-Kettering Boundary Line to the east, the Oakwood-Kettering Boundary Line to the south, and Corona Avenue to the north. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington also has a resolution this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a resolution approving revisions to the bylaws of the First Suburbs Consortium of Dayton, Ohio. Oakwood is a member of the First Suburbs Consortium, which is a regional council of governance which was established in 2005 to focus on issues of common concern among first-tier suburbs of the city of Dayton. I've actually served on this group since 2008 when I was elected, and have also served as the executive, or the president of that organization. First Tier Suburbs Council adopted initial bylaws in 2005 and amended them in July 2017. A new amendment consisting of several minor procedural updates was approved by the First Suburbs Consortium in October of 2024. It will not take effect until it has been legislatively approved by a majority of First Suburbs Consortium member communities who are being asked to ratify the amendment. The resolution I'm introducing will formalize Oakwood's approval of the updated bylaws. So I move that council adopt this resolution this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
And finally, I have a resolution approving the Solid Waste Management Plan of Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. Solid Waste Management Districts in Ohio are required to periodically update and maintain a five-year waste management plan for their district. Plans must be reviewed and approved by Ohio EPA, as well as a majority of the municipalities and townships within each district. The Montgomery County Solid Waste District has adopted a draft plan, which has already been reviewed by and incorporates feedback from Ohio's EPA. District staff presented the plan to Oakwood City Council at a work session last week, and council believes the plan is in the best interest of the city. The resolution I am introducing will formalize Oakwood's approval of the Montgomery County Solid Waste District Plan as presented to and adopted by the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee. On February 5, 2004, I would move that council adopt this resolution and ask for a second.
Second.
Anybody have any questions for me? All right, well then Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation this evening. I will point out that when we met with the representatives of the Solid Waste District, they indicated that in Montgomery County, Oakwood is known throughout the county as having one of the best recycling programs in all of Montgomery County, and we're very proud of that. It is now time for our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates this morning, or this evening. This Saturday at 9:30 a.m., we will be hosting our New Resident Breakfast at the Oakwood Community Center. This event is a great opportunity to connect new residents with local resources and services, and is an important step towards building stronger relationships and supporting those who have recently moved into our area. On Tuesday, we will be issuing a request for proposal for pool operations. This is an exciting development, as it allows us to bring in qualified professionals to help maintain and improve the pool facilities, ensuring they meet the needs of our residents. This is a crucial part of offering high-quality recreational services and enhancing the overall community experience. This Thursday, we'll be hosting a ribbon-cutting ceremony for our all-new electric vehicle. That will take place at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall. This is an important milestone in our efforts to support sustainable transportation options and reduce our environmental impact. I also wanted to say a big congratulations to the twelve employees celebrating March birthdays, including Cheryl Musias, Greg Ortell, Cameron McElroy, Joshua Wells, our very own Rob Stevens, Cory Taylor, Casey Ballinger, Alisa Grant, Matthew Staley, Greg Devers, Ansel Atkins, and Barak Ismail. Additionally, I want to recognize and celebrate the seven employees marking service anniversaries this month. Those seven employees include Dave Shuey, who is celebrating ten years of service with the city, Melissa Seifert, celebrating eight years with the city, Alisa Grant, six years, Greg Devers, three years, Cameron Daniel, William Dews, and Jacob Burns, all celebrating two years of employment. Thank you all for your continued dedication and hard work, your contributions are truly appreciated. And lastly, but certainly not least, a huge congratulations to the Oakwood Lumberjacks for their win in the first round of the 2025 OHSAA Division Voice Basketball Tournament, where they triumphed over the Kenton Bridge Cougars. Good luck to the team this Wednesday as they battle Bellefontaine at Xenia High School. We're all cheering for you. Thank you.
Any questions for our city manager? All right, and the e-vehicle that we're having the ribbon-cutting for is actually for our Public Safety Department, so.
Correct.
It is the first electronic, or electric, police vehicle in Montgomery County, so we're looking forward to having that ribbon-cutting here at the city. All right, it's now time for council comments. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. In mid-February, Brian Barr ran a front-page article in the Oakwood Register about an Oakwood snow sculptor, who, for the second year in a row, was awarded third-place honors in the world-class category at a snow sculpting competition in Frankenmuth, Michigan. This got my attention. I know there's many talented people who live in Oakwood, and for me, it's always thrilling to learn about their backstories. That's why I contacted Dave Chazar. I wanted to know how a person becomes a snow sculptor who creates fifteen-foot-tall, ten-foot-wide, and ten-foot-deep snow sculptures. What motivates a person to carve throughout the night? To my delight, Dave agreed to come to our meeting tonight to explain his process and motivation. Now, he's not a person who looks for recognition. He's a person that likes to inspire others, and that's why he agreed. So Dave, if you don't mind coming up and showing a picture and just making a few brief comments about your process. And Dave, also, if you would introduce your family.
Sure.
Thank you.
Dave, could you speak into the microphone so people at home can hear us?
Sure. That's my wife Kate, my daughter Mia, and my son Max. So we live on four.
Welcome.
And I think we're all artists, so, but we, yeah, every year, they support me in my efforts. I'm going to Frankenmuth, Michigan. You can see the large 10x10x10 cube. So the city gets together with the business owners, and they invite artists from all around the world to come to a competition in Frankenmuth every year. And they have sculptors from Argentina this year, last year France, Mexico, Germany, they've all just come in. It's a juried, you apply to be an artist there, and they select their artist, then you show up on a Tuesday. They provide you with lodging and food all week long, but they give you this large block, and you have no power tools, and you just have hand tools. They start the clock Tuesday at 10:00, and they stop it Saturday at 10:00. So they get over 100,000 visitors into town throughout that week. So they have Dow Chemical as a sponsor, all the restaurants, the school kids come through throughout the week and watch the whole process happen. And really, the passion is kind of following your next exciting thing. So what's the most exciting thing to do with that big block? It's to cut into it, and it's to find out where your sculpture is going to be, and you just take the next exciting cut after cut until it starts to reveal itself. So in a partnership with the town businesses, the local government, and the people, it's kind of like a county fair up there, they really support us, and they come by and they walk through. You can go to the next slide, and you can see, for me, it's beautiful to be outside during the day, seeing the clouds that you don't normally see the night. We carve all through the night, and then throughout the day, you can kind of see the cat starting to take shape there at the end. But also, you meet all kinds of different people throughout the day, and they have all kinds of questions, and everyone asks, "Why are you doing this out of snow? It's just going to melt." So it's kind of like everything's temporary in life, but if you can find some exciting things to do while you're here, you should do them. So that's what we do. And you can see our sculpture we did this year was a mouse. We put a four-foot mouse on top of the ball. So it's a ball of yarn with a cat on the bottom, and we called it Mouse Trapped, so because we're not really sure if the mouse is trapped up top or the cat is trapped on the bottom, so, but they're in this relationship. So, and you can go to the next slide. And you can see there at the end, the festival, that the town really sets up a lot of lighting and fencing for safety, public safety's there around the clock. And it gets a little warm, so sometimes it melts, but it stayed pretty cold. And there's our team of three snow sculptures, sculptors, my friend Charlie and Seth, and we're artists. So I started as a ceramic artist in college, and I just kept pursuing my art as I went, and then objects just got bigger. And I've been snow carving since 2017. Last year, we placed third. I don't know if anyone saw the big acorn and the squirrel that we did in the paper last year, and then this year, we got third again. So hopefully next year, we'll get second, so, but maybe first someday. But I would like to thank my family for supporting me on that week-long endeavor. And then I would like to just acknowledge that Oakwood created, from their city street crews, to the public safety officers, to the council and the administration, and parks and wrecks, you created an atmosphere where myself and my family could create a community and a network where I feel very comfortable leaving my family for a week to go snow carving, because I know they have a network, a resource, and a community here that they can rely on. So thank all of you and everyone at the city for making that possible. And there's my family with a sculpture. So if you have any questions, I'll be around later, but yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Mayor, I would like to just say one more thing about Dave, that he works as a behavioral health therapist at Dayton Children's. So this idea of inspiring isn't only, I mean, it's just, he works 24/7 inspiring other people. Thank you, Dave.
Councilmember Turbin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, congratulations again, and congratulations to you, Bill, too. Well, I also wanted to recognize our amazing students. As I'm sure many of you know, our academic decathlon team is unstoppable. On February 1st, they won their 13th regional title, and this week, they're traveling to John Carroll University in Cleveland, and they will compete for the state championship. So we wish- So we wish them all the very best. But we have other state champions. Oakwood is also competing for the state champion for the power of the pen. Who knew, right? And that's going to happen in May. And I understand they crushed it at the regional tournament. And for the very first time, Oakwood has won the Ohio Speech and Debate State Finals. Oakwood took first place against 89 schools here in Ohio. So we could not be prouder of all of our students as they go on to represent Oakwood on the state stage and higher. These are amazing accomplishments. And so again, best of luck to our academic decathlon team this week, and we're all cheering for you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Just a couple of quick things. I'd like to welcome Public Safety Officer Josh Rothenberger. As Chief said, it sounds like we have another, you know, gem coming to work with us, and we appreciate all that our safety officers do. It sounds like he's going to fit right in. So I welcome him to our Public Safety Officer group and just our whole department. It's a wonderful department, and I appreciate everything they do for our city. And speaking of appreciating what someone does for our city, Bill, congratulations again. I've enjoyed working with you. You know, I'm going to say, I'll tell you this.